I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Trustee Christian. Thank you, Trustee Christian. We will now have the land acknowledgement led by Trustee Reckler.
Thank you. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichen Yum, Moicma, Carkin, Paloney peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
Thank you, Trustee Reckler. I want to let people know to access translation of the agenda, click the top of the webpage using the word "English" for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available via Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. I have been challenged to say that in Spanish, so that will be coming soon. This meeting will provide public comment opportunities on agenda and non-agenda items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone. We have changed the public comment format, which will now occur at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last for one hour and includes any agendized item. The time allotted for each speaker has also been extended to two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine. If accessing the meeting by phone, in order to be recognized to speak on Zoom, your hand must be raised before public comment begins. Dr. Hurst, can we have the roll call, please?
Absolutely. President Phillips?
Here.
Trustee Clerk Smith Folds?
Good evening, everyone here.
Trustee Reckler?
Good evening to everyone present.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi?
Good evening. I am in Zoom tonight, but present.
And Trustee Christian?
Good evening, everyone present.
All present and accounted for. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. We're now going to move on to item A6, which is disclosure of items to be discussed in closed session. This evening, there are two items: public employee appointment and public employee performance evaluation. Do we have any public comment on these items?
No public comment at this time.
Seeing none, the board will recess into closed session. Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. The board is reconvening to open session. We will have public comment this evening. To access translation of the agenda, click the top of the webpage using the word "English" for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available via Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. Dr. Hurst, do we have any report out of closed session?
Yes, sir. I'd like to report that the board approved Marin Trujillo to be the next Director of District Operations at Step Five. The vote was four yeses, one no. Trustee Smith Folds voting no.
Thank you very much, sir. Folks, we are now going to move to public comment. Please begin to raise your hand in the Zoom. If your hand is not raised, I'm going to read the instructions for public comment. That'll give you a little more time to raise your hand. This meeting will provide public comment opportunities on agenda and non-agenda items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone. We have changed the public comment format, which will now occur at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last for one hour and includes any agendized item. The time allotted for each speaker has also been extended to two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if assessing the meeting by phone. In order to be recognized to speak on Zoom, your hand must be raised before public comment begins. So there are three hands up right now. If you want to raise your hand, now's the time. Going once, going twice, going two and a half, two and three quarters. That's it. Gone. Five hands. Mrs. Lon Harrison is the last one.
Our first public speaker of the night will be Ms. Marissa Glidden. Let me get the cloak up. Marissa Glidden, you may unmute yourself.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Hurst and district staff. My name is Marissa Glidden. I'm a third grade teacher on full-time release to serve as President of United Teachers of Richmond. Tonight, I want to acknowledge the exceptional work our educators are doing. The education system has been broken for a long time, but the weight of the pandemic has exacerbated issues that already existed long before. Despite this, our educators show up every day to give their best to our students under extremely challenging circumstances. We are so lucky to have such amazing educators and we need to do everything in our power to retain them during this massive teacher shortage. The district should be actively listening to the needs and concerns that educators have and should be focusing every single day on finding ways to provide educators with the support and resources they need and deserve. The board and central office should focus their attention on what's going on on the ground. Additionally, our schools are facing a massive sub shortage. This puts enormous pressure on our schools, staff, and students. Teachers are period subbing and taking on additional students, and it's burning them out, and it's not sustainable. I encourage the board to investigate every possible option to attract subs in our district. Some surrounding districts are offering incentives, increasing subpay, and coming up with other creative solutions to this problem. I hope the district will look into these options so we can recruit subs and take the burden off our staff. Our educators are incredible, and all the work that they do makes the biggest impact on our students and community. I urge you all to do everything that you can to retain and support our staff and keep your focus on what is happening on the ground at our school sites. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Gaye Chamberlain. Please state your first name for the record. You may unmute yourself.
Good evening. This is Kimberly Chamberlain, President of IFTE Local 21 SSA Chapter. As many of you know, I am a big advocate for all of our classified people and our students as well as the certificated administration. I think you've all done a fantastic job, including you, the board, of listening to all of our wants and needs out there. I would like to also say thank you very much for all your years of service, Marin Trujillo, to being part of the SSA Executive Board, to being in community engagement. And I know your new adventure in operations, Director in Operations, will be fantastic. You bring so much to our district. What a wonderful experience and show of all of your skills will be coming out. Thank you very much, board, for continuing to listen to all of our needs, our safety. Please continue to listen to the personnel. Don't just take our audits to heart as far as the piece of paper and the words that are written. Please listen to us, the people that have been here and working. Some of us have worked hard for the last two years during this pandemic to make sure that this district continued to run. Words are one thing, ideas, but the heart and soul are the people that have been here and working day in and day out. Please listen to us and pay attention to what we have to say. I know it's still a final decision on your part, but please take it to heart that we have been here and we care deeply for the students and staff. Thank you very much.
Our next public speaker is Maisha Harris Gash. You may unmute yourself.
Good evening, Maisha Harris Gash, Kennedy High School, Special Ed teacher. Yes, I am exhausted. I say that with a smile on my face, but I am exhausted. Yes, that period subbing. However, days like today and yesterday keep me coming back for my children. And so really what I want to speak about, I want to be the voice for one of my students, a freshman, and she shared with Trustee Christian and Trustee Smith Folds earlier this week when they were on our campus about the public comment. I gave my students an option because I don't give a lot of extra credit because I'm like, why am I going to give you extra, which means extra for me? So I'm not going to do that. But I said, hey, if you log into a school board meeting and listen, participate, all you had to do was even just say your name and where you go to school. So one of my students, one of my queens, she attempted to do so, but she didn't get on in time. And what she had expressed to the two trustees is like she's going to start conditioning for softball, which then means she may not get home in time to put her hand up in order to participate in the process. So I know we've been discussing about public comment and the ins and outs of it, but she made a very good point, especially for our student athletes or those who are participating in extracurricular activities. They want their voice to be heard, but if the timing is only at the beginning, then what do we do? We don't want to shut our young people out. I advocate for my students about self-advocacy. So here I am saying, hey, participate, but then here is this little speed bump of a barrier or however you want it to be described. So that's why I was speaking up for one of my queens because that is a concern that she voiced to two of our trustees. So everybody have a good night and thank you for your time.
Our next public speaker is Jen. Please state your first and last name for the record. You may unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Murphy. I'm a nurse at Kaiser in Richmond, and I've worked full-time during this entire pandemic. I want to voice my concern against the vaccine mandate. There is little to no risk for our children getting seriously ill from COVID-19. This decision was too hastily made. There is a risk of myocarditis for children with the COVID vaccine. It is a low risk, but there is a risk, and you must take it into consideration. You must also allow for in-person schooling with personal belief exemptions with a testing option. The law states SB 277 that was passed in 2015, if any new vaccines are added to the schedule, you must allow for personal belief exemption. I do appreciate the dialogue I've been having with all of you, and I just want to reassert that many mainstream doctors are imploring to use prudence in mandating vaccines in children. I recently spoke to the head of Kaiser, a doctor with two young children. I asked him what he thought about the vaccine mandate. He is excited to get the children vaccinated, to get life back to normal. But at the same time, he told me that he will go against CDC recommendation and spread the two vaccines apart to lower the risk of myocarditis in his children. I also want to say to Ms. Smith Folds, I really appreciate everything you're doing with the board. I think we need dissent. Dissent is what makes this country a great country. Thank you.
Our last public speaker of the night will be Cylon Harrison. You may unmute yourself.
Good evening, board. How you guys doing this evening? That is lovely. I just want to tell you guys, thank you so much for having the district staff get their AIPACs together. We're getting a little motion going on, and we appreciate that. That's good to see you guys. But I do have a concern. You guys hired, and I've seen that on the board agenda, the people that were going to be providing mental health services and counseling to our students. Black students need to see themselves. A lot of the people that you guys contracted with to provide that service don't look like all the children they're serving. There are children receiving services with people who speak in their language, and black children are not seeing any people who look like them providing these services. I'm speaking about at MLK and schools where we have high needs of children having challenges returning back in person. Can you guys please make sure the people we contract with provide you guys data with who are these people that are servicing our black children? And do black children get to see themselves in any of these people who are providing these services? And if you guys cannot find black therapists, psychologists, whatever these people's title are to support our children, let some of the parents know, and we have resources if the district cannot find any black people that look like the children to service the children. And I refuse to believe that's the case. However, I think the people who you guys contracted with don't support providing the services to represent the population they're serving. That's the point I was making. So thank you.
This concludes our public comment for tonight.
Thank you very much, board. We are just going to jump right to item C, which is comments from the Board of Education. Board, I'm going to give you five minutes apiece. This evening, we are beginning with Trustee Reckler. And Trustee Reckler, if you could give me one second, I knew that I was going to do this. So I should have been prepared. One moment, please. Okay, Trustee Reckler, whenever you're ready.
I am, and this will not take five minutes. So I want to congratulate Marin Trujillo on his new position. Congratulations to you. It's my pleasure to have been able to vote yes on your new position. I've known you for many, many years and have always appreciated and respected the way that you've held up and advocated for the children and families in this district. And I've seen you go to the mat many, many times on really tough issues and advocated in their favor. So congratulations to you, and I can't wait to see what you do. I also want to, once again, offer this board member's support to the superintendent in anything else that he needs in terms of shoring up operations. So if there's anything that you need, you need to think loudly. This board member remains committed and open to the possibilities of supporting the district. Thank you and good night.
Thank you very much. We are going to move on to Trustee Smith Folds. Whenever you're ready, please begin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that we have a chance to change the narrative to become all that we say we want to be. I think that this board has the opportunity to plant itself firmly in the ground as one who will choose right. As an English teacher, I enjoy a good story with a strong moral lesson. So I want to share this story with you. A long time ago in the animal kingdom, a sheep was passing and saw a lion crying inside a cage, trapped, and the lion begged the sheep to save him with a promise not to kill and eat it, but the sheep refused. After much persuasion and after and long after the sheep's gullibility, he opened the cage for the lion. Now, the lion was a very hungry lion, staying in the cage for days without food. It quickly grabbed the sheep to kill it and eat it, but the sheep reminded him of his promise. They were still arguing when other animals came passing by and sought to know what happened. Both the lion and the sheep narrated their own side of the story, but because of fear and in trying to gain favor in the sight of the lion, all the animals took the side with the lion, except for the tortoise, who came not to understand the whole scenario, who claimed not to understand the whole scenario. Now, the tortoise asked the lion to show them where he was before the sheep rescued him. He pointed to the cage. He asked again, where were you, inside or outside, when the sheep arrived? The lion said, I was inside. The tortoise said again, okay, enter, and let's see how difficult it would be inside. The lion entered, and the tortoise locked him back inside. In amazement, the other animals asked the tortoise, why? And he replied, if we allow him to eat the sheep today, he will still go hungry tomorrow, and we don't know the next among us he will be eating. The moral of the story is don't support evil today because it doesn't affect you directly. Tomorrow, it could be your turn. I want to conclude with my continued call for the following mission-critical items to be agendized and discussed as a board. Those items include adult school, trade school opportunities, period poverty, stand-in reports, trustee, student trustee standing reports, dress code, numerical literacy and overall literacy gaps and strategies in the district, equity statement and enforcement, public comment, revision of the bylaws in the Governance Handbook, preschool and TKAs, transition program inclusion, virtual school, remote working, looking at how we are doing our report cards, vaccine implementation, mental and emotional health for all students and educators, making sure we continue to have accessible drinking water for all students, our senior programs in our adult school, site standard safety for all schools that have site standard safety all schools should have in common, cameras, doorbells, and training, teacher and administrative burnout, period subbing, and our certificated and our certificated and classified staff burnout as a whole. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it, and have a great night.
Thank you, Trustee Smith Folds. And I don't think I said thank you to everyone who called in for public comment, but thank you to you as well. Next, we're going to go to Trustee Christian. Whenever you're ready, please start.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Just wanted to say, you know, I want to thank Trustee Smith Folds. You know, we was together today. We did school visits, and we was at Richmond High School. And then from Richmond High School, we went to Kennedy High School. And to just know that the layout of the land, there's a lot that we got to make sure that the equity is across the board at all of our schools and that we doing the right thing. So today was a busy day, and so we got to make sure that we go in the right direction as a district and making sure that we do right, you know, as a board, making sure that we fighting for the cause for our kids, for staff, and making sure that we have a strong district and that we not just going to be any old kind of issue. We're going to be a strong district and not a good old boy network. That good old boy days is long gone because those the good old boy days, that's where all our problems come from. And so we want to get this thing right because we've been elected to make, to get this thing right. And so, and it's going to take all of us to do the right thing. And so so I'm standing for what's right, and as I look down the road, I want to see, you know, our district be at the top of the list of, you know, really being successful in everything. So, and then I want to thank all of our classified staff who work diligently and hard, and all of our teachers, and all of our staff, really, because everybody have poured their hearts out since we've been back in school. And since we, in the midst of this pandemic, in the midst of what we dealing with, you know, a lot of people are tired, burnt out, yeah. And, and so, but I am support of you, and you guys are doing a good job. And and, you know, whatever you need, just let us know. We don't fight for you. I'm going to fight for you. And so and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gonzalez Hoi, whenever you're ready to be here.
Thank you. President Phillips, can you hear me? Great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I also want to echo my colleagues and thank staff, both classified and credentialed. I think that everybody's just working incredibly hard. I hope that one of these days we can have a conversation, Dr. Hurst and colleagues, about how can we show our appreciation of staff and everything they're doing? I do think that when I visit schools, I'm hearing constantly how burnt out people are because of the shortages in subs, because of the shortages on staff, because staff has had to do more than they've ever had to do before. I think that we have to figure out how to be able to show them that we value them, that we support them, that we appreciate them more than obviously just tonight, because otherwise, we're going to be in the same position in a year. More and more people are going to leave. There's that school district in Nodak East that is giving everybody a week off. I wish we could do that. Obviously, we can't just give everybody a week off, but we have to figure out how to show them that that we really do value everything they're doing and that we want them to stay in our district and continue to support all of our students. So another conversation for the parking lot, but I do hope that we take it on as soon as possible. About subs, you know, we had President Glidden call in about subs. Dr. Hurst, I agree with my colleague, Trustee Reckler, that if you can bring us some type of creative idea about subs. I shared with all of you about a week ago, one of the districts I support during the day, my day work, raised the pay to subs to something unimaginable. It was like $300 a day, which will never be able to compete. So we have to figure out creative ideas to be able to get subs because I know that's actually a big issue, both for principals and for teachers, that is burning them out. I also want to congratulate Mr. Trujillo. I know he's going to do a great job in his new position. I look forward to seeing what he does. I also would love to see creative ideas, Dr. Hurst. I know you're already doing this, but just to reiterate about the virtual school. I know we still have a huge waitlist. We're still looking for teachers. So we have to figure out how to do that, especially as we head into January, and potentially they might get even a bigger waitlist. We have to think of creative ways to support them. You know that you have our support. So go ahead and do whatever you can, obviously, as you're already doing. And then for agenda items, standing reports, I want to have that conversation. This is my eighth time asking for this. President Phillips, this is my eighth time asking for this agenda item. I do believe it's urgent. I do believe it has to do with what we're doing. This is my eighth time asking for this agenda item. I do ask you that you please respect that I am asking you to put this on the agenda as soon as possible. I'll ask it again next week. Last week, I also talked about student trustees getting report time. I would love for them to get some report time, so we hear directly from them after their superintendent reports. And then lastly, I wanted to thank the Valley View community. I had a, like, almost like a two-hour visit last week. It was supposed to be 15 minutes, turned into two hours, called Dr. Hearst afterwards with State Superintendent Thurman. We visited classrooms. We talked to principals. We talked to parents. It was really good. I just want to appreciate the community for welcoming us with great conversations. And I just wanted to end on thanking all of you, my colleagues, for yet another night. I know we've had, I don't even know how many meetings this year. I'm starting to see all of you more than my wife. And I just want to thank all of you for yet another hard, but important and honest conversation. And thank you as well, Dr. Hearst, for everything you're doing. Good evening.
Thank you. Co, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. So first, I would like to say thank you for trustee Smith Folds and Gonzalez Hoi advocating for student standing reports. Jess and I have been in the work of creating a school ambassador pilot. And we kind of are advocating also to have student standing reports as well and not just presenting data, but presenting how students actually feel rather than just statistics of like, oh, how are you feeling on campus? And then there would be a bar graph. We're actually trying to get students to have conversations with us and then present that. So we're currently working on that. But one thing that I did want to talk about was student safety. I am very nervous and anxious whenever I go to school, not because of COVID, but well, because of COVID as well. But as for my physical safety as in gun violence, my sophomore year, I experienced a school shooting before my birthday. And now this year, my friend got shot across the street from my school. And I think that it was really depressing and heartbreaking, obviously, for our school side, but it was even more concerning and upsetting that the district did not say anything about it, nor did they promote the GoFundMe or anything along those lines to help support her. What else? Yeah, there have been weapons that have been found on campus that our school site principal has addressed, but the district has not addressed them as well. I think just last week, a gun was found with a student that school site security had to take over, but the principal did send out an email, but the district does not address these certain issues, and I don't see a lot of discussion being held about gun violence or just weapons in general. So I don't know what the district could do about that, but I just think that it's really important to talk about those things and address them and just not sweep them under the rug because it seems as though, at least at my school site, yes, our admin does send out an email about it, but they don't do anything else to further any action or their concerns about the issues at hand. But yeah, thank you. That's all I'd like to say.
Thank you very much. So I would like to begin by thanking all of our employees for all of the work, hard work, dedicated work that they are doing right now in this time. People are working in an environment that's new, that's unprecedented to our time. But people are sticking in there. People are pitching in. People are covering for each other. People are showing up. And for all of the people who are showing up, but not just showing up, showing up and doing their best despite circumstances, I just want to say that I appreciate you, that this board appreciates you very much. But there are three individuals that I would like to single out on this evening. One actually is a former employee who is no longer here. And that employee is Gus Aguilera. I would like to say to you, thank you so much for your years of service in this district. I do appreciate you. You have left a legacy here, and I do wish you well moving forward in your new position and congratulate you for that. But I do want to make sure that even though you're not in front of me right now in person, that you hear me say thank you and that you hear me say that you are valued and that you hear me say that you are appreciated. The second person that I would like to single out this evening, thank God, is still an employee, and that is Marin Trujillo. Marin, this place is your home. And when you work here, you treat it like it's your home, and you treat the children and families like they are your family. You are one of the brightest spots that we have in this district. I believe that you are invaluable to this district, and I want you to know that you are loved and that you are respected. And I am very thankful that you have decided to stay with this district because you're you. So just thank you so much for being you and for being here. The last person that I would like to single out on this evening is Regina Weber. Regina, I want you to know that you are respected, that you are appreciated, and that you are valued. I want you to know that we look to you. We have looked to you as a stable force in this district and that your contribution is invaluable as well. And I know that there's a lot going on right now, but I hope and I pray that you stick in there with us because, again, just like with Marin, you are you and you are valued and you are appreciated and you are loved and you are wanted right here where you are. So Gus, Regina, Marin, I just want to make sure that I'm saying to you publicly and loudly, thank you for everything that you have done and that you continue to do. I don't really know what else to say, but just thank you. With that, I'm going to conclude my comments and let you know that currently the next scheduled Board of Education meeting is on November 3. And with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. I love all of you and have a blessed night.